He was a lawyer. He walked me through a lot of stuff, gave me a lot of references. Showed me a couple of new laws that have just been amended in two thousand fourteen to, uh, to make them a little more stronger. And he said, I told him I was gonna come to the meeting. I didn't hire him as a lawyer. He's not, and he wouldn't even remember me if I talked to him again. So I don't, don't feel like it's, I'm, um, I'm planning to, to make, take action or anything. You just simply research. Anyway, he told me to tell the board and Denise that, um, one of the whole issue, one of the whole, um, foundation of this open meeting act is that the whole country, this is a national and a, um, local law. It was, you know, it was, they came up with this because what's happening in all over is boards and towns and cities all over. There's a blur between serving the public and ruling the public. So he wanted me to tell, tell, remind you all, you are public servants. You are for the people and you are, and you are ruled by the people. You know, and, you know, so that's the way it is. And that's, a lot of these laws are in there. And as I, as I, I learned these laws, and I'm looking at you guys, I'd like to know you a little bit. I see, uh, you know, numerous non-compliance issues of a lot of these laws. And I, you know, I say, you know, they're not doing this on purpose. What's happening is the board and Denise are not up to speed on these laws. You've proved it to me, and I can prove it to you again. And I'm gonna go through a few of them that, you know, you're not complying to, and you're not doing it purposely. You just don't know it, you're uninformed. I know, I'm positive of that. I'll start with the first one. Uh, Steve Barrett called me up and we're talking, and I'm gonna videotape. And he asked me, he requested that I come to the select board and ask permission for you people to tape, okay? So, uh, ask permission for my rights. I don't have to ask you permission to do this thing. Uh, so I just wanna, uh, just to be clear, this is, uh, Open Meeting Act. It says here, and I'll give you the number if you read it. The VSA three twelve D, one, three, VSA three twelve D. It says, "Members of the public have the right to attend meetings to express their opinions on matters being considered by the public body and to tape or videotape meetings so as long as it is done in a manner that, that doesn't disrupt the meeting." So it's a law. Anyone can walk in here, tape, take pictures, just can't get in the way. This might get in the way, if you don't like it, I get rid of it. So that's the first thing I want, I wanted to say.
Would you like a response from me back on that?
Go ahead.
All I wanted to do was confirm that we were taping and that it, and it was acceptable to both parties. That was my reason for asking you, could we set up and take a tape?
Okay, you know, I, I hate to disagree, but you asked, you wanted me to ask permission. Uh, that's what it was all about, but you, we don't have to argue about it. It's water under the bridge, right?
I understand that.
You know, and so, it's, this is an instance of you not realizing the law, right? And there's other laws in there. And you know what, I'm not criticizing you, but you guys gotta, you know, you gotta, you gotta look through these laws and get freshened up on them. Two thousand fourteen, they amended all of this stuff. And there's a lot of stuff that I'm gonna start doing that's gonna use these laws. And I don't want people to get angry at me 'cause I'm using new laws. I want you to be aware of it, 'cause I'm, you know, I'm taking the initiative, you know, uh...
And the Select Board Handbook.
What?
The Select Board Handbook that we go by, we apply.
This, this is what you better refresh yourself on.
Right.
That has many different laws. I'm, I'm coming from this place. This is, uh, you know, it's only five pages, so a lot of stuff in there about how these meetings have to be conducted.
What I'm saying is that ours were, that my latest issue was two thousand and six. And I asked Denise to find out if there was a new version. There is, it's a twenty eleven copy, we have those coming.
Okay, but you need to look at this, this is two thousand fourteen. I, I think it's, you know, I think it's mandatory that you gotta have this on your desk. You know, I mean, I'm, I, 'cause I read, I was reading and it said, "You can find a copy of the open meeting law right on the desk." But you don't need that, 'cause I have a website now, and I have this on the website. I do have a website, I wanna let everyone know. It's gonna be, uh, it's already set up. It has, um, documents from the town. It has, uh, you know, the water bill, I, I put in some of the plans that Denise gave me, uh, for the recently, uh, uh, no, for a, a, uh, a water well they're drilling in, uh, in, uh, like, early next year. This is gonna cost twenty-two grand. And they're putting that in an revolving credit line of five years, and it may go up. They, they may borrow more for this well. And so a lot of people didn't know about this. You can go on the website and get, uh, see the, see the documents, the contracts, the whole deal. It's there. I'm gonna be putting stuff on there every week, including, this is gonna be sensitive, but I do have the right. Bank statements are gonna be in there every month, every week, month. And I'm going through them line by line, every line. And I really need to know some of the, uh, you know, a lot of VGF, what is VG? I need to know what some of these acronyms mean, so I can, you know, know, know what we're spending on. Anyway, so we're gonna take the open meeting test drive, okay? Fasten your seatbelts. And I don't apologize to Denise in particular. I got a couple of questions to ask you, but I, I, I don't, I, I don't want you to think I'm accusing you. I'm just exercising my rights. And, uh, I hope I don't upset anyone, but fasten your seatbelts, okay? I'm only gonna give, you know, uh, you know, we're, we're test driving the open meeting law. It's wide open, you know what I mean? Uh, right here, I'm gonna be referencing the bank statements and some of the expenditures, and I need to understand what they are. So I'm just gonna ask what they are, 'cause I, I saw a lot of stuff in here. And, you know, some of the stuff I don't understand, some of it appears to be very wasteful. And I wanna point this out to the people, so they can think about it, vote on it. You know, and, you know, no more hiding, nothing is gonna be hidden anymore. Everything out in the open. I wanna explain to the, the rest of the people here, there's, there's a thing called the, um, Public Records Act. What this is, is you can come to this office or any, any town office is open. Anything you want, any document, anything you can request from, from Denise, and she will give it to you free of charge, and that's just the law. I am exercising my right on that law probably to the, you know, much to the max.
It's not free of charge.
It is free of charge. You want, you'll show, none of the law you don't know. It's free. You have to give it to them free. It's in here, I'll, I'll, I'll find it, I won't waste the time.
I'll give you a final copy, it's not free.
Okay, here's another law you don't know. I will reference that and give it to you, okay? It says, "Open to the public for free."
That's a minor issue.
Okay, and then these documents. And you know, if you wanna...
Then that's changed from what I...
Yeah, I know, that's why I said, this is another instance of not knowing the law.
These are things then we will need to put into our budget, so that going forward, those funds will be there.
Right, right, I mean, you know, if I was the budget, I see, uh, tens of thousands wasted on it, in my opinion. You're talking about fifty cents now and then, or, you know, anyway. So, so how I'm gonna do this here is, uh, you know, I got the website, and I got some response. I get, I also have a Facebook, you can access from there. So I get Facebook and I get website. Town, townnewport.com and town, uh, facebook forward slash townnewport. I was surprised how many people, I got already sixty-eight people from, uh, Facebook all hooking up. I told them what I was doing, and they all, you know, now, now we've got a little communication going. People, uh, you know, all, all kinds of different people. And some of, some of the Facebook, I was surprised, it's three generations, the descendants. They get the, uh, three generations of people in there, you know, and they, and they're all talking and everything. And, uh, typically Facebook is about, you know, what you ate for supper, and a cutesy baby, and, you know, dog things and everything. And so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna glut it up with, um, with, with, uh, political stuff. But I am using it, I announced the, uh, the town meeting on Facebook. You know, I put this, made this little graphic and put it on, said it was gonna be here. And I'm gonna reference to the website. I don't wanna glut it up with the political stuff, so I'll put it on Facebook. Hey, there's this and that, new, uh, documents on the, on the website. Click on it, you go over there. Okay, here we go. So I got some questions, uh, you know, letters to the, letters, letters to the editor. That would be me, you know, through, uh, you know, email and stuff like that, comment. And so here's a couple of them, what they're saying. And, uh, it says, um, let's see, "There's something very wrong that needs higher legislation's attention with the water bill increase." Don't they need the people's vote for that loan? I'm assuming they're talking, they were assuming and referencing to the loan, the twenty-two thousand dollar loan that you just negotiated with the government and the, uh, and that, that civil engineer who's gonna get the contract. Uh, and plus, "I would really like to see an audit done on their books." Where is all this collected money gone? Okay, so another one. Have you asked Shumlin's office to have someone investigate or to step in? I would like to see our representative here. I'm far from being, uh, involved in polit- politics, but enough is enough. Okay, so you know, this is one of the big issues, is no transparency here. That's changing, I'm, I'm, as of today, it changes. I chan, I'm gonna do that personally. I, you know, put my own, little my own money, built the website. Everything is transparent from, uh, from here on out. You've got, get to know everything about this town hall, everything. These are our public servants. They are obligated to show you and tell you everything that goes on. And okay, so this last one, "We don't even go to town meetings anymore because of the politics involved that we feel don't have a say, one way or another." I experienced that myself on the last town, the town select board, uh, which I'm gonna call it, you know? So anyway, uh... Where's my letter? There it goes. Uh, this is a letter I got. So a woman said, uh, in response to, uh... Yeah, they, they want, oh yeah, in response to, uh, going to Shumlin's office and making a claim and all of this. I'll tell you what I said. Don't get upset, Denise. I'm warning you, I'm not, I, I had no means, uh, in attacking you. I'm gonna ask you some, some hard questions here, but anyway, about, about the budget. Okay, so anyway, I wanna let everyone know, uh, the numbers and everything I referenced on this, in this letter, uh, are they, they, I got from Denise. They were, you know, they were, so they are a public record. They may seem that they're personal, but they are public record, and I did get them from Denise, and she can confirm that. All right, here goes. This is the answer to the letter, "Why don't I go to Shumlin and start a big, you know, camp, campaign or something?" I said, "It's not that simple. You have to have evidence. When you're dealing legal, they will not listen to someone who just suspects something. Rock-solid evidence will get you heard, otherwise they ain't, they don't wanna hear it. They ain't got time for this." So, uh, here's how it could be done. If you wanna, if you wanna help, and you know, you don't go to Governor, Governor Shumlin, you go to the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office. And then it goes up to Shumlin, if he thinks it's serious enough, or maybe never gets there. Anyway, but that's the right way to do it. You don't call Shumlin and say, "Yeah, they're doing this, they're doing that, that'll do you no good." No one'll listen to you anyway. So you can't go, you can't go there with mere suspicion, you need evidence, or they won't even listen. So keep in mind, uh, there may very well be explanations for the transactions. I'm gonna talk to you about federal legitimate. I am by no means accusing anybody, but I, just by simply asking for an explanation on a, on a, uh, on a figure I saw in the, you know, on your bank, bank statements, okay?
I don't think I gave you the bank statements, yeah. I gave you the orders, I haven't given you the bank statements. I didn't tell you, that's the bank statement.
Yeah, and I'm gonna reference to, uh, lines in there. So, now that I told you that, uh, I'm seeing questionable activity on the, on the bank statement. Questionable, that means, I mean, I'm, I'm not single in anybody, I'm not accusing anybody. I see Denise Dagel on, uh, you know, you know your salary. Says, uh, I'm, I'm, from what I gather, you're making seven hundred thirty-three dollars a week. Okay, so I'm looking at the bank statement, I see four statements, seven, you know, by the week, so I'm assum, assuming that's your salary. Then I saw three additional checks, uh, written to you with the amounts of twelve hundred dollars, sixteen hundred ninety and thirty-eight cents, and two seventy forty-nine. Now, that's obviously not, you know, your salary, so what is it?
I'll, I'll answer that. She's also the elected tax collector.
Now, these are disbursements.
Yes, they are. She is the elected tax collector. When she collects a tax that is delinquent, then eight percent is charged to that, and she gets a percentage of that. That's how the tax collector is paid. That's what you're seeing in there on those disbursements to her. As taxes coming in late, the interest on those goes as her salary. That is the law.
And that happens, how often, once a year?
Whenever anybody pays a tax.
Nice work.
If they're delinquent. If they are delinquent.
Delinquent taxes.
There's a delinquent taxes.
Okay, and one more thing, uh, targeted Denise. I apologize, you explained it. You can understand why I wanted to know, and I think everyone else would like to, you know, you know, it's, you know, there's so much, you know, I mean... Uh, so, so I have nothing to say about that. I, I believe you, and I got my answer, so I hope you don't got disturbed that I asked.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, the next one is, is, uh, so, uh, the Goodrich Memorial Library. Okay, so, um, you're giving them a donation of twenty-three thousand dollars a year, and you are on the Board of Trustees. So, uh, first of all, twenty-three thousand dollars a year for the donation. When this town is hurting and in the red, it's obscene. I can't see it. I mean, you just raised the water bill on the same week you gave twenty-three grand to the, uh, Goodrich Library, who by the way, is doing fabulous. I know Carol Nicholson, I've done some work with her, she's bragging, "We're way in the black." They got five employees, they pay. We're doing better than any library in the area. And, and another thing is that you're already giving twenty-nine grand to the school library here, which is excessive in my opinion, but, uh, you know, the twenty-three grand? I'm, I'm suggesting, you know, I, I'm suggesting that twenty-three grand, cut it down to three grand. They won't like you for it. I, myself, I would cut it, I'd cut it totally, it's, it's obscene. Every week they get four hundred and forty-four dollars. My water bill went up, and I have to pay...
You can do that at the next, uh, the next town meeting, because the voters at town meeting voted to pay that amount.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You hear that? You wanna give twenty-three thousand dollars to the library every year? Or you wanna keep it in here? You know, so vote for that, please.
One person at a time speaking, please.
The people at town meeting instructed us to pay them that. The Goodrich Memorial Library was donated to the town of Newport, not the city.
Right, it belongs to the town.
We owned that building.
Well, let's talk about the expense of it. They don't need the money, they're way in the black.
At the next town meeting, be there and bring that up, because I would more than glad not to have.
Yeah, okay, and everyone on the, you know, everyone on Facebook is gonna be reminded, what?
It's Article fourteen, it was in the last year's town report.
I saw, yeah.
And it was so voted, and the people spoke.
Well, I hope they speak again, against it, you know what I mean? So that's what I'm saying, and you know, that's about it for me, I mean, uh... Yeah, so that's it. I'm gonna be looking for everything, and you know, I hope you don't, you don't got, uh, I'm gonna be exercising the open meeting laws and, and, and Public Records Act. I'm only exercising my right, I'm not out to start trouble. I know they're probably saying, my ears been ringing all week. Who does he think he is? He comes up from Boston, and he thinks he's gonna run the damn town? He should go back where he came from, right? I'm done.
You didn't do the proposal.
What? What was the proposal?
And...
But before I go, before I go, you and I discussed a proposal, can I still give that proposal? On, on, on a water bill, um...
Reduction?
Hey, Ms. Yu, you and I talked about that, and you said, "Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a moment to submit a proposal that you would just consider listening to."
You, you told me that you had a couple of proposals that you would submit to the board.
Yeah, you said, "Bring it up with the board," right.
Right, but I told you that to submit them to the board, and that the board would review them, and if we thought that they were valid proposals, that I would hold a special select board meeting to work on and discuss those proposals.
And I heard it wrong, but if that's the way it is, then...
Spring them on us tonight and wasting everybody's time, sitting here trying to de, de, decipher and figure out how this will all work into our plans that we have. I don't have time enough for that.
Okay, the proposal I'm gonna have will be on the internet, and if you wanna check it out, I think it's good.
Okay, and I hope you bring it to us.
Well, you know, from what I understood, our conversation, you're gonna let me just lay it out verbally and then put it in writing, but that's all right. You know, I'm, you know, you have, I, I wanna go by everyone's rules, as, as I hope you'll go by the, the new laws of, uh...
Correct.
Open meeting and, uh, Public Records Act, and, uh, you know, that's, you know, I guess, uh, I guess I, I'm done, I guess. If anyone wants to use my little podium, you got paperwork, it's all yours.
And just to reiterate, this is, the website that Barry has put together is not an official town website.